Well, welcome everyone to the Monday, June 13th, 2011 meeting of the Brattleboro Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome all our citizen participants and our media. The first order of business is to do an agenda review. As perhaps everyone knows, we're going to be going through some of the sort of the distillation of the commercial land use presentations that have happened so far in discussions. I'm going to talk about the presentation that we're going to do on the town plan to the select board next week. By the way, that's next Tuesday. And then, under other business, we're going to be talking about the motion at the select board for sustainability discussion. So that will be under other business. We're actually going to put that down at the bottom. So that we can deal with that separately from everything that's before that, so. And that's the agenda for tonight. Anything that anyone would move to be added to that? So first order or the next order is to approve the minutes of May 23rd, which was our last meeting, low these many weeks ago. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Got to say, they're very complete. My compliments to Julia? Or you, Sue?
Julia.
Julia. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next order of business is announcements. I just made the announcement that I wanted to make, which is that we are going to be meeting with the select board on the, a week from tomorrow, on the 21st, that is. Meeting starts at 6:15. I would really like everybody on the Planning Commission that can make it to come. We are going to have different parts of the report to the select board that at least a few of our commissioners are going to present. So, but we'll get to that when we get to the presentation. So, can everybody make that?
Gary, what was it, the 20th, you said, or 21st?
21st, yeah.
Tuesday, 21st at 6:15?
Yeah. Well, the meeting's at 6:15. I don't know if we, have we got any indication where we'll be on the agenda yet, or?
We won't know until later.
Yeah. I mean, the way it usually works is that even if we're the first thing that's not a regular thing, it'll be a half hour or something, you know? And that's probably optimistic, but that's probably a good thing to figure on.
They do all their reports soon.
And it, you'll hear later, but it'll be about a half hour, half hour presentation, so. So everybody can make it except for Liz?
I think so, yep.
Great, okay. So any other announcements?
Did, I think you talked about it last time, the salvage yards?
Yeah.
Thing, and then there was, I got another email about something else, too, that wasn't salvage yards, it forestry and?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I did have that written in my book and I didn't bring it.
Different meetings over the next period of time.
Yeah.
Sounded good.
There's a whole series of meetings that the, about forest and wildlife topics, and they're being presented in conjunction with the Wyndham Regional Commission, so.
I can forward that email.
Okay. Yeah. There's, there were about four or five different meetings, I think, that?
Yeah, I think there were like one hour webinars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got it. You know, I don't know.
Yeah, I got two of them.
I'd like to see that.
They were very interesting, some really neat, neat things.
Yeah, there was old planning commissioner names on there, Darf and Roger and Dana, so they probably don't, they might not have everybody's.
Yeah.
Sent out.
Yeah. Okay, great. And there is, I did talk about the, as Carolina said, the salvage yard, it's a VIT thing about salvage yard regulations. I think they're going to talk about junkyard dogs and that, or something. No, salvage yard regulations, which is going to happen on interactive TV on the 23rd.
Good thing it's interactive, huh?
It is. You want to keep your distance, but, so, that's it on announcements. So, other business, as I said, I'd like to include the sustainability discussion about the motion from the select board. I would like to include that in under other business and then talk about that after we talk about our select board presentation. Is there any other business that anybody, any other, other business that anybody would like to bring up? Okay, the next item is public comment. So, this, we have an unusually large number of public members here, which I appreciate. Thank you for coming. This public comment is about, if you would, keep it to things that are not on the agenda, because there will be plenty of time to talk about those things further, further down on the agenda. So if anybody has anything that they'd like to speak about or bring up like that, please step up to the microphone and anytime, and this include is the same later on, anytime you want to speak, you can go up to the microphone, say who you are, where you live, and for the benefit of the television audience, please, so. Any public comment? We will launch right into the commercial land use presentation, and it's going to be started by Rod.
Thanks, Gary. So as you might have expected, both Sue and I are going to present sections on this, if no other reason than to avoid you getting sick of listening to me. This is a progress report on the work that's been undertaken by Hawke Consulting. Roger Hawke from Hawke Consulting has been working with us reviewing each of the four commercial land use districts in town. So that's downtown, Canal Street Exit 1, West Brattleboro, and Putney Road. And so with this purpose of tonight's presentation is to report back the Plan Commission on the three neighborhood meetings that were conducted. In consultation with Roger, we decided that it was useful to conduct a sort of a neighborhood scale meeting for Canal Street Exit 1, for West Brattleboro, and for Putney Road. When I get to the description of what the project was, I'll explain why downtown wasn't included in that. Way back in the beginning of Roger's consultation work, we wanted him to set the context for what would be commercial growth in Brattleboro in the next five to 10 year period, maybe a little longer term, but specifically the next five years. And to do that, he looked at the demographic and economic context or projections, and what we are clear about now is that Brattleboro and Wyndham County, and to some extent also neighboring counties in New Hampshire and Massachusetts are experiencing a slow pace of population and economic growth. What this means is that the kind of changes that we're seeking here are not trying to shape rapid growth or rapid development, which has its own set of challenges. What we're seeking to do here is to make incremental improvements in the quality of the commercial land use in town with this as a backdrop. And because we're talking about private land, private development, we're really much, we're really focusing on kind of market, market forces determining much of this change. So where there isn't much pressure for change, we don't expect there to be much actual change. So, right now, the commercial real estate market is made up of almost 8,700,000 square feet. And remember here, we're not just talking about retail, we're not just talking about one district, this is for the entire town. So it's a range of uses from light industry through to, through to retail spaces. The new construction that has been added since 2005 totals about 90,000 square feet, and that runs out to about 1.05% increase over the total that you see at the top of almost 8.7 million square feet. That's an important number right there, because it's a little bit stronger than the population increase. The population increase between 2000 and 2010 has been 0.3%. So we've added more commercial space than, than the population increase, but not by a huge margin. So, setting the economic factors in a broader context and the market factors in a broader context, this is a graphic that we've used from Roger's presentations. In the middle is the holy grail, if you like, the quality of life, and around that red circle are the kinds of things that contribute to a high quality of life. And you can see there that a variety of the things that we have discussed with reference to the plan, and also more specifically to the commercial districts themselves come up, but sense of community, for instance, and visual quality, environmental quality, housing choice, good jobs, healthy neighborhoods, public safety, affordability, all these are components of a high quality of life. Let's look a little bit more closely at district futures. Let's take downtown first. It needs a master plan, and that's part of the reason why we didn't hold a, if you like, a neighborhood level meeting with residents and stakeholders in downtown. Building a better Brattleboro has worked with Trip Muldro, a market consultant looking at downtown's position, market position recently. We've got, we've been involved with them in that project. There's been communication between him and Roger on this project, we're sharing data and so forth. Trip Muldro, working for that, also made clear that downtown desperately needs a master plan. It's the only commercial neighborhood area, or commercial neighborhood that we don't have a master plan for. And so that's the key and vital realization for downtown. But we also want to set the context of this project and what we think is the town's future for commercial development in the context of, that downtown has held its own fairly well during the recession. It's holding its own relatively well now, even though it's been subject to some pretty devastating setbacks, including the Brooks House fire recently. All the literature that we've reviewed and all the work that Roger's done in similar communities points to the fact that a quality, a key quality of life measure is a vibrant and active downtown. We feel like we have a vibrant and active downtown and we can preserve that. It needs to be embodied in a master plan that works with the assets and tries to overcome what impediments there are. We'll go into a little bit more detail about what that could include a little bit later on. Second area or district is the Canal Street Exit 1 neighborhood. The idea there would be to implement the master plan from 2000 with a focus on bike and pedestrian access, and also its pivotal role as a gateway to downtown. The third area was West Brattleboro, and there, continue working on implementing the master plan, again, focus on bike, pedestrian issues, and driveway access management. The fourth is Putney Road. There, work to implement the master plan by reducing zoning districts, focus the mixed use village center at the southern end of the master plan area, which is that area immediately north of the Memorial Bridge where the West River joins the Connecticut River. And then, again, focus on improving bicycle and pedestrian access in the next five years, independent of the status of the road project, what level of implementation it has, and focus also on driveway access. When we look at district futures, again, in the context of the entire town, we've got population decline or sort of a flat population in the primary trade area. The primary trade area is something that people familiar with Trip's work and Roger's early work would have seen on a map, that basically takes in Brattleboro and some immediate surrounding towns, and also a broader section of what we call secondary market sector, or secondary market or trade area, which would go as far as the outer limits of Cheshire County, Franklin County in Massachusetts, the upper reaches of Wyndham County, to the north and to the west. We've got flat or low vehicle travel projections provided by the state that's underscored by the data that they've been collecting on an annual or semi-annual basis, which means what, what we think that means at least is that there's a more competitive setting for tourist activity, in other words, flat or limited opportunity for growth in tourism using Brattleboro as a, as a base or as a point for getting off 91. We have declining unemployment, declining employment as measured in Brattleboro. By, we had a long conversation with many people who were present at an earlier presentation from Roger. We are aware that the self-employed category in Brattleboro is significant and potentially is growing. When we use this broader, when we use this measure for employment, we're using a very specific measure, but it allows us to make comparisons between this community and many others. And that does indicate that Brattleboro has, it has had job loss over the last 10 years, and it's difficult to see where that's going to be reversed. We think that there's limited scope for regional hub activity. By that we mean that we don't necessarily expect to see a dramatic increase in people living in surrounding towns and commuting in. We don't necessarily see dramatic growth in regional retail, so to some extent, we're aware that people will visit Brattleboro to shop at the supermarkets like Priceline or Hanaford, even though they're from some distance away, as far away as Wilmington. So given that we know that Wilmington's population is also stable or shrinking, we don't necessarily expect to see any of those communities boosting that kind of activity that's present in that kind of retail activity. We also think that there's some growth in some services, but for the most part, the service sector is fairly flat or stable. No strong indications of market growth. Where we do see some growth is in medical services employment and medical services provided. Brattleboro continues to be an important education and human services location, and we think that there's growth in some of those categories. When you get down to the neighborhood level plans, that actually means important things. So, going back to downtown. We thought about this in terms of sort of a land use forecast. So this is actually a prediction on the basis of the data that we've reviewed, comparing Brattleboro to other like communities and working with Roger, whose area of expertise is formulating downtown economic development strategies and land use plans. We think that the visitor traffic will continue to be a significant portion of the market. Be careful here not to say just tourists, we mean commuters, we mean people working in and around the region as well as tourists. Their needs are not all exactly the same. We think that for the downtown, that's a significant portion of their total activity, you know, total sales for retail. We also think it's an important contributor to street traffic and, and business in general. The retention of existing businesses in the downtown area is a priority. We don't see any land use conflicts with the existing zoning as it's now established. We think there's scope for more varied downtown residential use. The other remark I'd want to make is that I think, we'll get onto here actually, so this is a list of suggested improvements for the downtown. What we are suggesting here in very summary form is the likely kinds of goals and action steps that you see in the land use section of the town plan. Okay. So we think that we've had the Main Street project, for better or for worse, but we did get 80 compliance with all crosswalks. We got new crosswalk signals. We've had a substantial improvement to some extent in the quality of sidewalks and crosswalks on Main Street itself. The larger area of downtown needs similar improvements. We think that more attention needs to be paid to bike lanes, bike racks, and bike storage, a sort of a more permanent form of bike storage. We think that landscaping and lighting is another area that needs to be addressed. We understand from BAB that they've submitted a grand implication to make progress on wayfinding signs and sort of a comprehensive package of signs that will help people make their way to downtown and then around downtown. We think there's more scope for traffic coming. We're not totally sure about the current occupancy rates of upper floors of the multi-story downtown buildings, and we're not sure exactly what purpose they're put to. You know, the balance, it could be anything from residential through to light industry. We'd like to make sure that occupancy of upper floors is something that we can obtain. We think it's an important ingredient for the viability of the individual buildings, and also will contribute to street life. And then, we also think it's important to keep the neighborhood character of downtown intact.
Rod?
Yep.
When I was looking at the census, we went to all those buildings, so potentially you could see from the census?
Right. Oh, that would be good, actually. So, at least the residential versus non-residential breakdown, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good point.
So, I want to go back. Well, I wonder if, when would be a good time to?
I was wondering, but everyone's like paying, I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah, trap the attention, but, you know, I think if we, why don't we stop?
Yep.
At that point, and then anyone who would like to, on the, on the commission, and then members of the public?
This might be a good point of course.
Ask questions or bring up points or that sort of thing. Just to put all this in context a little bit, and I think, you know, anybody who's been to one of the meetings that have been held, there've been really five altogether. The whole idea with this is that we're working on the town plan. One of the chapters is land use, and included in land use is, is issues about land use for the commercial districts, among others. And so, the intention of this, of this planning process with the consultant is to kind of meld, meld in a way that we haven't done it before, planning for all the districts in town. And so, that's, that's sort of the context of this discussion. Obviously, there's, there's a whole residential component to land use, among other things, but this is intended to talk about the four, the four commercial districts in town, so. But what we're trying to do is, is in doing this, is see what the, what the scope of recommendations are, and, and as a commission, we will have to accept those or discuss those and come to our own acceptance of it and conclusions? Yeah. About, about what goes into the plan based on this, so. So why don't we start with the members of the commission? In terms of recommendations for downtown improvements, now, the downtown plan, I know it doesn't, isn't on downtown improvements, but that is going to be one of our action points.
Yeah, I should, yeah. A recommendation would be develop a master plan for downtown. So to some extent, the details of these improvements here and other things would, could be addressed in a longer term sense through the master plan for downtown.
That be put in the town plan?
Yes, there will be a recommendation in the town plan.
Is there anything else that's that sort of thing, that isn't a physical improvement, but more maybe an organizational or?
You mean for total town plan?
For downtown.
Oh.
You know, I mean?
I mean, we're immediately thinking of a document that's going to be called, you know, the master plan, but I think that the key thing there to identify is that we're, we're saying that that process needs, it's a process that needs to be initiated that would result in a master plan. So I guess it's a, you know, it's a full-scale planning process that engages the stakeholders in downtown.
Yeah.
So that would be property owners, residents, you know, people who use downtown.
It's kind of apples and oranges, because these other areas have a plan.
Right.
Downtown doesn't.
Right.
And to that extent, these recommendations are kind of the cart before the horse.
To some extent, yeah. Right.
Right.
I mean, we, I guess the one thing I'd say is, I wouldn't feel terribly concerned about having such explicit recommendations made in the town plan, because they're not major and they're not particularly controversial, but Liz's point is correct. Each one of these kinds of recommendations are exactly what you find in the other master plans, and so.
Right.
Yeah. You know, I don't know how, I'm sure Andrea has her views, but I don't know if any of these are, you know, contrary to what that is.
So are these the recommendations from, from Roger? Roger?
They are.
Or your work together with him?
Our work together with Roger, to some extent also discussions with the BAB, you know, representatives from BAB and the work that Trip Muldro did as well.
Yeah.
He was also really adamant that downtown really badly needed the master plan. And he had other, you know, purposes for that as well, but.
I think we talked about a lot of this, too, when Andrea came and gave her presentation with Bob Stevens.
I guess my question is more maybe what, what sort of items you guys anticipate are going to find their way into the town plan as action items for downtown?
For downtown. Well, you know, the, the key bottom one would be?
The master plan.
Master plan.
Master plan.
Yeah, okay.
The other sections, the Putney Road, the Exit 1, all that, is that coming?
Yes.
Yeah, this is just downtown. I thought it'd be good to just pause at this point.
Question for me.
Anybody on the commission have any?
I got, I got a question. So, why exactly is a master plan important to the downtown? What are, what are we missing now without it?
That's a good question. I'd say in answer to that, what we don't have necessarily is the kind of background information that master plans produce about, at a sort of a neighborhood level, about uses, potential conflicts, the kinds of challenges that are present, and what those strengths could be. And then the next thing is, I think, most often you, you often end up in a setting where you're developing a master plan. master plan for a, for a neighborhood for whatever reason, regardless of it being vulnerable in some way. And I think maybe the downtown does have some vulnerabilities.
I, I should have asked a better question. Uh, what will the master plan's effect be in future actions in the town?
It would, it would guide, first of all, it would support regulatory, um, processes when it comes to land use development. So, it would act in conjunction with the town plan and would be something that would be reviewed for large-scale projects.
Okay.
It would enable and, um, focus the town's attention on which grant opportunities should be pursued. It would clarify any zoning conflicts that may be present or zoning amendments that need to be made. And it would be an opportunity to, um, focus community attention on the assets that the downtown has and how better to, um, develop those assets. So, for example, some of the comments that we've already encountered would include such things as gaining better access to the waterfront, which is a physically challenging and financially challenging thing to pull off. Um, so a master plan could be a useful process as well as a document that, um, you know, directs the community in terms of doing, achieving that goal.
Speaking of the waterfront, does the downtown, would a downtown master plan include the waterfront, especially that-
Yeah, the urban center.
The urban center.
The urban center is part of it. Sorry, put that around the other way.
Do you mean the coast street?
Specifically, specifically the town owns a piece of property that's on the waterfront.
That is in the urban center, but portions of property off of that road are not where it must be.
Right. So, there's a line that goes through-
Yeah.
-um, that area. So, there's a, there's a, there's a zoning boundary there.
But we are talking about that area.
But that would be included, my question is, in the downtown master plan. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from commissioners? And we'll open it up. Andrew, you may have some thoughts about that last question.
Yeah, you, unfortunately, probably going to have to want to stand in front of the microphone right next to that.
I'm Andrea Livermore, and I'm the director of building a better Brattleboro, and I live in Marlboro. Um, relative, she says with shame, standing here.
No, no, no shame. Not allowed.
There's no shame in being from Marlboro.
Marlboro people think it's a badge of honor.
Um, you know, from, from the perspective of what's been recommended here, it's completely consistent with the conversations that BAB has been having, either just sort of in a longer-term way or immediately. For example, you know, the wayfinding signage, you know, we have been working on that grant and hopefully that project will move forward next spring. Um, you know, I wonder a little bit, and this may be, I don't know if this fits in the, in the town plan or in the recommendations, but I wonder if there are ways that the municipality, the town could be capitalizing better on the structure with the downtown organization, that it's a resource and there is really a formal relationship between the two organizations. And I don't know if that's something that should be in there or could be in there or could be suggested. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing, and it sounds like this would certainly happen in the master planning process, and, you know, hasn't happened, and I understand why that hasn't happened, but I do think it's really important to bring the stakeholders into, you know, public meetings, whether it's, you know, and again, residents, uh, property owners, business owners, and people who frequent downtown. You know, every year we have issues relative to, you know, Elliott Street, Harmony Lot, public safety, those kinds of things that really are, are kind of, you know, they're, they're big and they really do affect, you know, commercial and business use and that kind of stuff. So, I think that, um, you know, including those, those conversations is really important. And I'm trying to think if there was one other thing. Oh, I just wanted to respond to your question about sort of a, a master plan, why a master plan. And I, I'll just sort of, um, go back to a conversation that Rod and I had some time back, and I said, you know, why doesn't down, downtown have a master plan? And Rod said, you know, I think probably it's because, you know, your average person looks at it and says, it's built. There's no land to use. The land is used, so it's almost like it's done, um, which I think it's important for us to recognize that, um, you know, there's capacity for so much more, there's so much more within the parameters of the district, whether it's density, whether it's use of buildings, whether it's just reconfigurations of things. And depending upon how the town moves forward with its, really its economic strategy around commercial use, um, it could be more dense, it could be, you know, just richer, um, it could be at a whole different level in a, in a visionary way, and we could develop that over probably an extended period of time, but all that could happen. So, I think the point is that it really isn't done and, and master planning, actually, some of the examples that Trip Muldro showed us had to do with actually, you know, visual diagrams of what it could look like, which starts to make you realize, oh, wait a minute, you know, this building could look like this and could, you know, could end up like this. And it really just starts to keep those creative juices flowing, um, around not only visually what it would be look like, but the capacity for what could happen there. So, I think those things are important. Thanks.
Thanks, Andrea. Anybody else like to speak to? Go ahead, Jim. You, you have to stand to the microphone, please.
Nothing to do with downtown at all. I, I probably have, um, topic, more, more to say when we go further on. I've looked at all the power points on the, the town posted on the website.
Yeah.
And there's certainly comments about the other areas that come up, but specifically in relation to downtown, I've got a couple of observations that, um, come out of the last forty minutes, thirty minutes. And, um, I think to some degree, it depends on the economic drivers downtown in terms of what you do. Um, it, I have a plan from nineteen eighty-three, which was the redevelopment of downtown. Um, it was prepared by the Wyndham Commission and the museum and all things like that. It's thirty years ago. And there's a lot of the stuff, that was before the courthouse was built, it's before all sorts of things. It's, it's, it's interesting in itself, and if you don't have copies of it, you should take a look at it. Um, it talks about incorporation of the waterfront and how to do it. It talks about how to deal with Harmony Lot. It talks about the museum area. I mean, there's a lot of good stuff that was done by architects and planners back thirty years ago, which really, you know, just to review it now and see, you know, how, what was the thinking back then? Why didn't it happen? And what points of it are relevant? Certainly, things like, and I'm laughing here, it's about traffic calming. I sat downtown today in complete motionless. There is no traffic calming required right now. Um, this is just, you know, that's a, it's, the lights are all flashing and no one's moving. I mean, that's just the problem that we have at the moment. But things like traffic, traffic, um, not so much traffic, uh, mo- motion, but traffic patterns. You know, we have a situation now that's very different from the plan from thirty years ago. You could turn left on certain things where you can't anymore. You could turn right. There was no one-way systems. Somebody really needs to look at the traffic patterns in downtown and see whether what we've got now is appropriate for where we think we're going to go in the next five years. Parking, another huge issue. If you talk to all the businesses downtown, the single reason that downtown businesses do not succeed or don't feel like they can succeed is because it's a parking nightmare. We've got a garage, we've got Harmony Lot. Somebody really should review the entire parking strategy for downtown. That, and I'm including in that, you know, whether it's metered or free, whether it's two hours or fifteen minutes. That whole process needs to become a part of the vision. Maybe it's part of a master plan document in terms of, or master plan study, in terms of how you improve it. I, I mean, I would love to see a kind of a radical approach to how downtown parking is changed with a view to making it easier for businesses to succeed in downtown, the commercial aspects of it. I mean, maybe I'm echoing some of the things that, you know, B A B B has talked about or is thinking about. Um, and then I, I think the other thing that, which you have just all touched on, like the use of the river or the lack of the use of the river. We have the most fantastic asset in the Connecticut River, and we have our back to it. Somehow in a, I would hope that somehow in a master plan or a town plan that's looking out, there's some effort made to turn some of it around to take account of the river. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Yeah.
Are we, uh-
Maggie?
Are we responding or discussing their questions at all, or are we just listening? Uh, can you respond?
Sure.
So, your, was your comment about, uh, traffic calming, is it basically saying we don't really need any because it doesn't really go?
That's a temporary, maybe that's a temporary thing. I mean, it's, sorry, shall I stand in front of?
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
My comment about traffic calming, you know, I, I, if everything's bearing, if everyone's barreling through here at thirty miles an hour, forty miles an hour, which is an appropriate speed, then put in the bump outs, put in the trees, narrow the roads, do, do, do them standard traffic com- calming moves and processes. Right now, at four o'clock this afternoon, it was a total jam. I mean, the, and there were no trains. The thing was the town, you know, it took a long time turning left out of Flat Street because those lights were all flashing and nobody coming down the hill and no one going up the hill wanted to let anybody turn. Okay, having got up to the top of the hill, it took a long time turning onto Elliott because people are coming across and blocking the junction. I mean, we have something that's not fully functional right now and therefore doesn't need calming.
Right.
Today. It might need calming in three years or five years when it's all working very smoothly, but somehow, somehow I have a feeling that might not be the case.
Yeah. I mean, it feels to me like somehow traffic calming ends up in these things because of some group think that we all have, that someone goes, traffic calming, and we all go, yeah. And it ends up on the whiteboard and somehow it ends up in the plan.
So, I agree with you.
There are some points on Flat Street and Elliott Street where it's actually pretty wide and not really comfortable as it does.
I would, I, I would, yeah. I, thank you, Sue. So, what I'd say there is, most people right now are pretty focused on traffic, the, the apparent absurdity of you to calm down while you're sitting going nowhere on Main Street. But the traffic calming points have to do with the side streets, which arguably since this new traffic pattern has been, has been built, are a little less calm as people are coming through. And so, there are parts of Flat Street and, and other side streets in parts of downtown where we're conscious that, um-
That may be because there's a failure in downtown, though.
Yeah.
I mean, don't look at fixing a problem because you've got a failure over here. I mean, look at the cause and effect that goes on. And likewise, you know, some of the, I'm, I'm asking that somebody review the traffic flow. I mean, you used to be able to drive up to the fountain and turn left. Now, you've got to go around the courthouse and everything trams up. There's all sorts of things that you used to be able to do in prior years-
I agree.
-that, that are, that weren't a review in the context of downtown improvements.
Yeah.
A review. I'm not saying I'm making any recommendations. It's just like, why don't we review the guys?
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that.
So, I assume that in master planning, uh, the traffic and parking will be pretty integral parts of that, would you say, Andrea?
I, I guess, you know, I, I think there's a master plan, there's a master plan. We can say we want a master plan, but I think then we have to define exactly the scope of that plan, and that would be something that would come up. I mean, certainly the issues are issues that we need to look at.
Yeah.
Right. I would, you know, I'd say, given the nature of downtown and the kinds of uses that you see present, and when you talk to stakeholders, if it's, if Tim is not the only person who feels that way, and I think he's not, then we get it through the stakeholder kind of process in the early parts of the master plan, and then if it is an issue, it would be a theme that's pursued in the master plan, and it's appropriate that circulation, traffic, and parking are parts of downtown master plans.
Okay.
So, a lot, a lot of these items, basically items that would be discussed, in the discussion of the master plan rather than get into the details now.
Right.
Would that be an appropriate statement?
Yeah, I probably want to head-
Before I go off on my next-
Oh, and you're-
Say that.
Do you want to have a rant?
Make a note, make a mental note.
I don't, no, I don't want to do a rant. I just, I'm ready for a discussion, but I don't think this is the appropriate place. It sounds like it's in the master plan-
Yes.
...discussions.
Yeah, I think that's, it'd come up in that context, is my feeling, but.
This is really kind of a review of the recommendations-
Got it. Okay.
That's all, yeah.
-of the planning process. So, Maggie, did you have your hand up?
Just a brief clarification question. Is the Canal Street area separate consideration from downtown?
Yeah.
It's coming up.
So, I won't go into detail, but I did attend the, the Canal Street, uh, meeting at the hospital. And to the extent that Canal Street and Exit 1 are an entryway into downtown, um, the last time I got off at Exit 1, I paid particular attention to the islands and the areas that Roger had suggested, that even just basic landscaping. It is amazing how much of a difference his, his artistic rendering of what it would look like if it were even mowed and maybe planted with something. It, I couldn't believe how unkempt it looked, especially now with all the rain, um, when you get off Exit 1. And if that's the entryway into Brattleboro, it's sort of like, okay, what do we expect when we get downtown? So-
That'll come up later, Meg.
Yeah. So, I just, in reference to, because you have landscaping there, certainly Elliott, the, the Canal Street area, but, you know, landscaping makes a huge difference, is, is all I could-
Yeah, we'll get on those.
And that would be my comment in relation to downtown.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else about downtown? Okay. Why don't we head to another-
I'll just, yeah. All right. So, great segue there from Maggie. This is Canal Street, Exit 1. So, the forecast, which again, just to remind people, is that look at the background demographic and economic data, including market data, uh, for different kinds of activity, remembering not just retail, but other kinds of commercial land use. Um, we think that the travel services gateway function is stable. By travel services, we mean the kinds of things that are, uh, include traditional fast food outlets or other eating, you know, non, what's the term I'm looking for, non-franchised eating outlets. So, there's a couple of homegrown pizza, um, places at this point. Uh, the gas stations, uh, even bank ATMs and so forth are all, can all be thought of as, as travel services. There is a gateway function. It is the first formal exit of Interstate 91 as you're heading north from the flatlands. Um, we don't see much real growth in that sector, um, for the town as a whole, so we don't expect that to change dramatically for Exit 1. We think that there's some scope for medical services in that neighborhood to grow. Um, the hospital itself has a master plan, which in the most part focuses on redevelopment of their site, but, um, as you know, a large number of the buildings in that neighborhood have functions that are associated with the hospital itself. And there's also a, um, nursing home and other kind of related medical facilities, if you like. Uh, even Rescue Inc. could be included in that category. Um, so, the residential neighborhoods both east and west of Canal Street, we feel are an opportunity. We think that that way, the best way of actually saying that opportunity or expressing that opportunity is encouraging movement across Canal Street, Exit 1, right now, partly to do with, I, I guess I drove it this morning and I haven't finished the striping on that section, but I know they're literally in the middle of restriping that part of Canal Street, which will make the crosswalks at fair view and a few other corners more apparent. We think that what we'd like to focus on is encouraging movement backwards and forwards across Canal Street, um, encouraging bike and pedestrian use, um, on both sides. We think that there may be some need for minor zoning adjustments, but nothing dramatic at this point. Roger has, um, talked about the possibility of either two or three zoning overlays that break out the difference between the travel service gateway slash retail function focused up on the price tougher Plaza area, extinguishing that from a more of a medical office, um, oriented zone that would sort of blur as you go down Canal Street towards downtown. Um, the kinds of things that we, um, think need improvement, again, the sidewalks and the crosswalks and bike paths, design guidelines for future commercial, uh, building development, uh, more attention to driveway access management, particularly for commercial, large-scale commercial uses. And use the zoning regulations and the design guidelines that came with the report from two thousand to establish a clearer kind of neighborhood character, using overlays to, um, achieve that zoning distinction that, that Roger discussed. So, um, I want to, oh, yep?
Um, just like Maggie, I've been looking around, um, at another Canal meeting. You know, there's not even a flower pot out here. I was thinking, gee, that must just be Canal Street, but-
It's pretty widespread, actually.
It's everywhere.
The roundabout at Putney Road also looks-
Yeah.
-semi-avanted.
Um, but the, the other thing is that we talked at that Canal Street meeting about, that these were simple changes, and then we talked about how difficult they were if they would be trans.
Yes.
And also Roger said, well, we don't want to just have these items sitting around in a master plan, sitting on a shelf.
Right.
So, I, I just, let's have another discussion about how- So I, I just, let's have another discussion about how it gets from bullet points to being an easy thing to do, because...
To actual flower pots.
Yeah.
Actual flower pots.
Right, I, I think you raised a really important point. Um, I think it speaks to a couple of things, and the first one is, um, the town operations generally focus on things that are most urgent and, and the obligation on to meet that service or that, um, delivery of that product is, is the most important, and then, um, for better or for worse, the aesthetic or appearance issues are relegated to, you know, lower down the list. I think that there's some management issues around, all the roads that we're discussing tonight are both state highways as well as local roads. So the division between, the division of labor between VTRANS, the highway department, and the town is a little blurred. Um, it's not, as far as I can judge, and I'm not the best person to speak to this in fact, probably art in Gary are, some communities, I think that their local community organizations like the Rotary Club or the Lions Club or something similar, make a pretty determined effort to beautify, you know, they'll take on the responsibility for some of those things. Some of that is present downtown, you'll see some of the traffic islands are maintained by Brattleboro Savings and Loan, for instance, one outside the library. It would be a massive project and a massive undertaking for the local service organizations to, to up what they do, and I know they already make a huge contribution, and I don't want to speak for them, because I don't know what their priority setting is, um, and I imagine that they're doing all they can. But I think it does speak to resources and how they're allocated and who thinks it's important. Um, so what I'd say is the first step is conveying this information to the select board, I think is critical, opening up a discussion with the broader community, in the newspaper and in other venues, so that there is a meaningful discussion about, well, if we want to improve the way we look, how would we do that and who would do it? And then making the appropriate kind of resource commitments to do that would be part of that.
And is it the select board that deals with VTRANS and their...
Yeah, it goes back to what, again, in Vermont, um, the division of labor between the planning commission and the select board is that one of the hats the select board wears, and they wear many, is that they sit as road commissioners. So they make decisions about the road budget, which itself is a complex formula involved state funding, and direct the Department of Public Works and the Department of Parks and Rec, whoever would be the responsible entity, um, and works alongside VTRANS around questions of road maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, and so forth. So there are, those questions are for the most part ultimately going to be resolved by the select board.
Is there an inventory somewhere of all these spaces that need this type of maintenance that would be...
Uh, not, not really, I mean, I don't think it would necessarily terribly hard to put together. And I should say, again, in defense of, people like Public Works and, they're not unaware of it, it's just that on any one day, they're really aware that there's a set of other pressing issues that they've...
No, I don't think anybody, nobody out there is claiming the public service program.
It seems mostly that it's, um, state-owned property.
Yes, it is. And that, that's an important thing to hold in the back of your head as we go through this whole presentation, because there's other things that will come up that raise questions about that.
One thing I would wonder is if, is there associations in different other areas, is there, has there ever been a Canal Street Association or any, any discussion of that before or anything?
No, no. I mean, you're West Brattleboro, right? So, right, of all the landlords and you know who they are, I'm the only one here from Canal Street, you know?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so...
Uh, oh. I have one comment on that.
My name is Art Greenbaum, I own property with my partner Joe Fortier, four twenty-eight and four thirty-six Canal Street, right across from Subway Shell. In regards to the maintenance of islands, it's very difficult for organizations to find volunteers. I know Gary and I serve on Rotary and we get the same six hands all the time. The other comment I'd make is that it's also a caveat, we'll do your project, but do you have the money to buy the material? So it's important with discussions, I think with the selectmen, to say to them that we need to have a pot of money for all the districts that could be accessed, maybe on an, a matching grant application. So if downtown wants twenty percent and Canal Street happens to want thirty percent, the dollars can be divided, because I think you can find volunteers that will do a dedicated job, but they still have to knock on the doors to get the money, and that's the hard part. So I think that's a discussion with the selectmen. And in regards to island beautification, I just encourage you to look at the areas to make sure that you don't try to over-plant something that becomes a maintenance issue. And a good example, in my opinion, is the Roundabout at Exit Three. Too much plantings, too many weeds, it would have been much more appropriate to maybe do more decorative, um, granite blocks, and then just focused on key areas where you can put moisture retaining soils. So that I would encourage you to look at for Canal Street.
Thank you.
Thanks, Art.
So this is the kind of visual prompt that Roger used, and, um, the only irony in this is that the first time, well, in recent times, it was VTRANS that actually used the very same image for presentation on Main Street. So, um, the top left-hand corner here, you see Canal Street as it currently exists, um, taken heavily, uh, looking, uh, north at the intersection of, uh, Burge and Canal. So this is a car exiting Burge on a canal. And so with a little bit of photoshopping, um, Roger was able to come up with this. Couple of points of note, this area here actually is an existing pocket park, and this one, it's, uh, re-landscaped and a little bit more attention is paid to it. You'll see the inclusion of bike lanes, uh, what I would call a nature strip or a grass strip and some trees, um, in general, just a sort of a, um, you know, an increase in the, the sort of general landscape and aesthetic appeal, but not too radical. So for instance, there's no changed land use here, they haven't placed the power poles underground, the power poles and the power lines, the phone lines underground, there's no really hard expensive infrastructure changes here or dramatic investments in land use. It's, uh, fairly modest, given what you just said before, the, um, beautification program. Not to say that it isn't very difficult or challenging to achieve that in the current, uh, setting. Um, again, this is drawn from the actual plan we have from two thousand and two thousand and one, just showing examples of different street lighting and how that has a significant effect on the streetscape. I don't think we have a major issue with street lighting, but it's an important element to consider or remember when we come to do changes, or particular with, particular with parking lots. Um, another example here, this is further down Canal Street, um, people are familiar with this site, it's just, uh, near the corner of Elm, um, and Canal, and in fact, the, this parcel here, the side street on the edge of it is in fact Clark Street. And so one idea here would be to, um, engage, you know, through a grant mechanism or something similar, or the point where there's a change of ownership or a change of use, encourage the new owner and the new users to enhance the building in a way that's consistent with the streetscape as it is, um, and make the most of the sort of, um, foundations of that structure in a way that, um, is sympathetic with the streetscape and the neighborhood. Uh, this is the topic that Maggie was discussing, Roger and I spent a couple of hours at this point, uh, probably eight weeks ago now, um, we're all familiar with where this is, and, um, there actually are flowers right there, I just want to point that out. I think they're wild. Uh, and this would be later, much, much later, um, but you get to see the contrast, and again, it's just sort of a Photoshop trick, um, but useful to explore. Okay, so any other questions, we're back to move on to a...
The sign is nice and wasn't up, it doesn't require much maintenance.
So was there anything else about Canal Street that anybody...
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
I noticed a lot of the things that looked better to me there were the planting of trees. How difficult is that?
To plant trees?
Yeah.
Um...
I mean, I know how to plant a tree, but...
I know, physically, no.
To get the logistics sorted out.
Or I can get them and paying for it and then making sure they stay alive? It's reasonably challenging, actually.
We have a tree board that takes, does a lot of that.
We do, we do have trees, we are able to obtain trees fairly affordably, we have a tree board that can, that can promote and, and, you know, do some management things there, and certainly we have really competent staff at both PTW and Parks and Rec that can actually do the planting, so, yeah.
We got a couple of...
Andrea?
Yeah, I think we actually have a, a tree committee that is sort of above and beyond the call of duty statewide, we have a really good one.
Yep.
And every single year, um, opportunities for grants to get trees come across my computer screen, and we almost, I, I often go to the tree committee and say, "Do we need any?" And they actually have private funding sources that have money that want to buy trees. So we probably have the resources to actually get trees if we can get ourselves organized to have a place to plant them and a way to do that.
And then take care of them.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I wanted to quickly say about flowers and maintenance.
Andrea, could you just stand up and speak into the microphone, please? Thanks.
Something else is...
Yeah.
Um, sorry, the, the thing about the flowers and the plantings, because in my job downtown, I've sort of, I'm like the flower lady. You know, you, it's expensive to buy them, it's expensive for the dirt, um, but the biggest challenge really is the maintenance. You know, once you get those planters planted, you've got to water them pretty much every day. I mean, sometimes it's every other. Uh, I've used, um, well, I've used volunteers, and just everybody doesn't get it about watering plants, and it's, you know, it's so much worse to have planters with dead flowers. So it's, it's a big undertaking, and I think flowers are the greatest, but it's easier said than done.
Right.
There are other towns that have done it, that have pulled it off, that we could certainly model after, but it, it's, um, it's not as simple as it seems.
Thank you.
Another example of a good intersection that's been planted with trees and various flowers is, um, um, Youth, England Youth Theater, their parking lot on two sides, really, um, I think that was undertaken by DART, actually, and, but it really made a big improvement in that, just that whole intersection, in that the plantings have really matured just over the two years that they've been there, and it almost looks like one of your photoshopped slides. It looks great, if you haven't gone by there recently, please do.
Yep. Michael?
Uh, Michael Bosworth, Brattleboro, just actually a short question, how does the Esti Organ complex fit into the Canal Street, or does it, is that part of what's being looked at?
Good question.
I mean, it's, um, Burge Street is not part of that study, although most of the land use along Burge Street conforms to sort of mixed-use commercial. So there are certainly, um, issues to be brought up, and I'm, I'm glad that you raised it, because I actually walked it the other day and felt, um, that in some ways it's better than it was, and there are some parts of it that are actually pretty, I think are okay, and there are also parts of it, if it's a windy day or it's traffic traveling at a reasonable speed, it can be dusty and a little uncomfortable for pedestrians. It's a popular pedestrian bikeway, because it's relatively flat and, um, gets you out of the whole, you know, sort of downtown smell, if you, um, don't know that, I've noticed that high school kids or school kids use it a lot. So I think actually it is open to question, but it's not directly part of the study. We were sort of trying to really work the corridor there.
That'd be great.
But that's a good point.
Okay, well, let's go to Wes Brattleboro.
Hey, Gary.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Martha. Hi, Martha Ramsey, um, Brattleboro. Uh, I live in Morningside, and, um, I first started attending this series of meetings because, uh, I, I mean, I went to the Canal Street meeting only of the three outside districts, because, um, just because I live closer to Canal than any of the other districts, and so I felt that's somehow where my concern goes most immediately, um, even though I really don't live that close to it. I want, do have a question, and that is, um, when you said, uh, and what, uh, my question is, and I have a couple of comments, but my question is, in what sense is residential neigh, the residential neighbors, neighborhood, um, on both sides of Canal Street an opportunity?
It's an opportunity in the sense that we think that, um, there are some regional service and retail functions in the commercials area that is along that part of Canal Street, so the Exit One Canal Street area. But we think that, um, encouraging the residential neighborhoods on both sides of Canal Street, so that's east and west, so that's all the way down to South Main where you are, and then all the way on the other side of Canal Street up to, along Maple Street also, to, um, take advantage of, you know, or to, you know, to encourage them to be, you know, participants in the, in a, in the neighborhood, and so therefore give that region a more neighborhood kind of feel. There's a way in which some of those retail activities in the Price Chopper Plaza are really sort of whole town or even bigger than the whole town, but with some minor adjustments and changes in, in settings you might expect to, um, come off Exit One for Canal Street and feel like you're really moving into a, um, into a neighborhood that's pretty clearly focused on that part of, of town.
So, do you mean that in, in a sense it would feel like a, a village center more than it does?
Yeah, more so than it does now.
More, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Does that help?
And the opportunity that you're talking about would be by outreach, there's a potential for people living on both sides to get more concerned with the street, it's, you know, the street as a center.
It'll come up a little bit in reference to West Brattleboro and even more so with Putney Road, but there's a way in which, um, very busy streets can act like a, like a river, separating people rather than bringing them together. So we're conscious that if you had, say, small children in the residential neighborhood on the west side of Canal Street, so that's up behind Price Chopper in that neighborhood, and they were to go to Oak Grove or even the middle school, you might not be that comfortable with them crossing Canal Street, but everything else is okay in terms of their, in terms of their walk. But if you really enhance the neighborhood feel, so it's not just changing the traffic patterns or including more trees, but actually trying to evoke more of a neighborhood feel, so people looking out for each other to some extent is also what I'm saying here. So the kids would feel safe going into a store saying, "I'm not safe," or "I've hurt myself," you know, that, those sort of less tangible neighborhood things. That we think that it will be, that that would be useful, and we think that it's true in the other direction. We think that there are people who probably live not too far from the high school, but are getting in their car to drive to Price Chopper, because they're a little uncomfortable about crossing the street or riding their bicycle to Price Chopper. So if we were to really facilitate bike and pedestrian activity focusing on that, that retail hub, um, that is the, that end of Canal Street, then it would change visitors' impression of what they're entering, they would feel like they're entering the neighborhood, and it would change the experience for people living there, and they'd be more comfortable with it as their neighborhood. So we think that Canal Street might be acting as a barrier a little bit, and that we, it wouldn't be very difficult to change, to turn that around.
Mm-hmm, thanks.
Does that help?
Yes, and that, to me, I would, that would be my sense as well, that, and that the fact that the traffic does move so fast and there's so much through traffic really does, you can see like this, there's more than one little pocket park on there, and you can see that, um, the, you know, people would, I think it's pretty clear that people would do what you're saying if that river were made to flow more slowly or to be less of a dividing barrier. I, I wanted to comment on the, the landscape appearance aspect, because there's already been a fair amount of discussion of it, and I, I think it's interesting that with all the aspects of, of planning, that people are, seem to be focusing... the aspects of, of planning, that people are, seem to be focusing, especially at least here tonight, on that issue. And I wanted to share that, that was my experience also after going to the Canal Street meeting and seeing the difference visually that, you know, this, this minimal landscaping can actually make in the overall impression that outsiders have and that we ourselves have of where we live. It, it really confirms for me that this is, this is potentially a hugely useful and important aspect of, of changing the situ, or of making the town more appealing. And I wanted to reiterate a couple of things that I heard in that meeting that I thought were important, just to, because I want to draw attention to them. And as I recall, someone made a comment to the effect that communities that have beautiful appearance overall, that the reason this happens is it comes from the citizens. It comes from the people who live in the town, that there's civic pride. And they, people want their town to be beautiful. They're proud of their town. And they do the work themselves. And that really struck me as, as a very important piece of all this. It seems to me that we could, you know, probably the discussions that, you know, there's probably been decades of discussions in the same room about how to generate, you know, a more beautiful town appearance. And there's just a sense that I got from that comment that i- if the people of the town as a whole don't get behind it, it's just, there just isn't going to be enough momentum or resources for it to really happen townwide. So that's my comment on that. And one of the, I think, a select board member said, you know, "Why don't we try to get, you know, a movement townwide going, get people excited about this and see what we could do?" You know, we could always try. And I was very impressed by that, as something that, for me anyway, would be quite exciting to try. So I just, again, just wanting to put some emphasis on, on these matters. And then, yeah, again, to, to reiterate about Canal Street, I've been, I too have been driving, you know, every time now I drive through exit one or up and down Canal Street, I'm really looking, the presentation was so helpful in, in that sense of really focusing me on what, what am I really looking at in a more, a much more observant way? And I, what, it seemed to me that it's really not that bad visually. I mean, there are lots of parts of Canal Street that are really pretty, pretty, they look pretty good. And they really don't need much. You know, but, and then when you look at that, as has already been said, you know, we look at that intersection at, at exit one, it's, I'm losing, I'm, I'm trying to articulate something here that's, that's not easy to, to hold on to, but I just thought, you know, what if I were coming from out of, out of Brattleboro and I got off at exit one, and what would it be like if I immediately felt that I had arrived somewhere? You know, that I, that I had arrived at a place, a town, a community that has integrity? And I, and I guess that's what planning is all about, is to create that. That's not there now. But I, I guess my real point here is, I do agree that that area right at the exit one is tremendously important because of that gateway aspect. And I just had never really thought of that before. But it's, it could be very dramatic what happens when you come right off that exit. And I would, and it doesn't seem like it would be that hard to achieve that effect. So I, that's my speech for tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Martha.
Thank you, Martha. Okay. Shall we go to West B?
We're going to move on to West Brattleboro. The West Brattleboro Master Plan and for our purposes, this project is consisting of West Brattleboro Village and the area west of Edward Heights, which is the somewhat new rural commercial district, formerly suburban commercial. With Roger's work, he didn't focus too much on West Brattleboro Village. He, as the master plan reinforced, it seemed that there is support for the built pattern in West Brattleboro Village. He did mention the desire for a green, some sort of green, whether it's the configuration presented in the master plan or some other sort of configuration. And since that time, we have received some, received some feedback about some of the difficult crossings of Route Nine, Western Avenue, from the West Brattleboro Association. So the land use forecast is that the travel services and kind of the gateway function are stable, possibly a slight contraction in the medium to long. The resident, residential population is stable, and there's no large conflicts with the existing zoning, but there's been little growth, so you can't really test the issue. The rural commercial district is, is pretty physically constrained, so there is probably some room for infill development. As for West Brattleboro Village, that's pretty tightly compact, and the zoning seems to be working there. But again, there's been little growth to really test the zoning issue. For improvements, and this is primarily in the area west of Edward Heights, the recommendations are to implement design guidelines, guidelines through site plan review. That has actually been done with the rural commercial district. The consultant will be taking a look at those and see, seeing if there's any further adjustments to be made. An appropriate public program. And I think this is referring to commercial signs, not wayfinding, Brad, or is it more wayfinding?
No, I, I mean, more wayfinding and just the kind of state, state highway clutter. Not, not private advertising, not, not private signs.
Not, not business.
Not business signs.
We didn't get into that in those discussions. There is a need for some driveway access management, and we have project-based stuff there. So we're not seeing a lot of development out there, and redevelopment of properties is probably going to take some time. So maybe doing a project-based approach where we work on four properties at once to kind of control access would be the desirable way to do it, and a more effective way to do it. Then the need for a bike and pedestrian path link to downtown, again, we don't expect to see that through incremental development or redevelopment. It will need to be maybe finding grants, doing pieces at a time. And then an upgrade to Route Nine to have tree plantings. We confronted this issue when doing the rural commercial, and it was agreed at that time that we didn't want a lot of trees extending west of Edward Heights because the view was deemed really important. So, you know, maybe a little bit of different tree planting than you find on Canal Street or when we talk about Putney Road. And then improve the village and bike pedestrian access, which I mentioned, we received some comments from West Brattleboro Association of where some of the issues are across.
If I could just make a point on that last one. I, I think that somewhat similar to the other large-scale road projects that were, were off the town, there's been a lot of work going back a large number of years now, looking at the implementation of a village green, if I get this right, Michael, stretching the western end from the existing West Brattleboro Fire Station and heading east to the limits of the church or...
A little bit further, but yeah.
Yeah, maybe that, yeah, maybe just a little bit further than that. So, so there's been various studies and reports that have been developed, looking at the implementation of a green there. The issue again is that it's a state highway with a posted speed limit of 40 miles an hour, I think at that point.
Thirty?
And then from a bike or pedestrian user's standpoint, again, it has a, it's very wide and difficult to negotiate the entire width of the road in one go, if you've got very short legs or old legs in particular. So kids getting from one side of West Brattleboro to the school on the other, a particular challenge. So what, what we mean there is, the green is a large-scale project. It's not, it's not meant to say that it's not going to happen or shouldn't happen, but that there are perhaps interim steps that could be taken that were relatively cost-effective. It may even encourage support for a bigger project, but that we need, this is a five-year timeline that we're really focusing on here. So we want to start doing something now about bike and pedestrian access in the village, rather than waiting for the, for the big, for the big, to hook the big fish, if you like.
This is just a kind of a potential configuration for a shared use path for pedestrians and bicyclists. And this is an example of the sidewalk. We know that there's some challenges with sidewalks, but an example of some tree plantings and users sharing roadway.
Also access management is dealt with very seriously there.
Thank you. So right now, that property is, is pretty wide open. You can just see it in another slide. So releasing the driveway to the business is important. And there's a couple of sites on that stretch that could use some air. And this is an example of an off-road shared use path.
And where would something like that go?
Along the...
It could be inland, sort of like, separated by some, some distance from the existing roadway. So it would, that would involve a complex set of relationships with existing landowners, obtaining easements or something similar. There's some real serious physical challenges with attaching it to the edge of Route Nine at certain points. It might be safer and easier to bring it in, you know, bring it, bring it into the parcel mall, but...
There's no old railroad tracks we can pull up and...
No.
Good building design. We talked a little bit about it with Canal Street, but here's some examples of kind of the type of architecture that is desired in this district. This is actually a fairly large, 20, 30,000 square foot building, but because there's breaks on the facade and the roof line, it doesn't look like that, per se. And this is the building before that needs some access management. Okay. If you had design guidelines, you could eventually maybe work it into something that's more desirable for the district.
Okay. Did you want to catch your feedback on West B?
Let's see if there's some...
Sure.
Comments. How about first on the commission?
I have one. So it appears that, you know, based on the West B and the Canal Street, and even a little bit on the downtown, everything, a common denominator seems to be landscape, whether it's tree planting or other things. Is there anything we can do as a planning commission writing a town plan to influence increasing budgets in public works, for instance, to, or increasing budgets in the town and moving money around, or setting some other priorities to, to reflect what appears to be a town, you know, a lot of the population's desire to have more landscaping? I mean, to me, it feels like, just from what I'm hearing, we're not doing landscaping a lot of it because either it's state-controlled roads or budget doesn't exist, so we have to go try to get people to do it.
Yep.
So is there something we can do as a planning commission to, to raise the priority of that in the coming years? Being new on the planning commission, I have no idea. That's why I'm asking.
Two, two, seven?
I, one of the things that, that we, one of the ways that we pay attention to that is in writing ordinances. And, you know, there are landscaping regulations in, in the ordinances, and we've spent quite a bit of time at times talking about them. As far as raising, you know, causing money to be raised in town for that, I don't think we've ever discussed that. And I don't know that we would be real successful at that. But, you know, it's, I think the success there is that, you know, in the zoning ordinances, there are provisions for landscaping and, you know, but that's, may not be the, the parts and pieces that you're talking about, really.
Gary, when we talked to the select board and we reported them on our findings, isn't this one of our big findings?
Yeah, it is.
That there's this desire, and it seems to be widespread from all the public interaction that we've had.
Yeah. And I think ultimately, that we put that desire into the town plan in, in several places will be a good, that'll be the way to go. Yeah. Okay.
Right. I think it's fair to say, in the current setting, the conversation would rapidly end up being, okay, so from this list of commitments that we currently have, identify one that you don't feel so strongly about, take the funds that are attached to that commitment, and then attribute them to your landscaping program.
Yep.
That, you know, that's not unreasonable in a certain kind of way. I, I think, even if, I, I can see why that is a valid response on some level. I think the other thing that the select board and other boards and committees in town really should hear is that in all the work that the planning commission and the staff here have done, the common themes in all our public outreach has been improved bike and pedestrian access, including quality of sidewalks, and improved attention to things such as the gateways and, and landscaping of, of public space. And I know the confrontation is with the budget, and I know that it's not going to be easy for them to hear, but it doesn't invalidate the, the depth of people's desire to do that.
And there's no doubt that that has happened, you know, in all the public outreach that we've had, so.
And can we put that together with the discussion of what Andrew was saying about that the tree commission has funding?
Sure. Gary, you had a handout here?
Maggie?
Maggie Barton-Hagan. I have been a member of the Town Plan Advisory Group. And in that capacity, I would, I would like to say that one of the things that we did as a group, when we were looking at the structure of the town plan and, and working with Rod and Sue, is, is the idea of when there are action steps that need to be taken as priorities are indicated in the town plan, and there's a vision and a goal and an action step, that entities that might take responsibility for those actions be indicated in the town plan. This does not mean that the town may, for instance, if you're talking about landscaping, necessarily have to budget for it, because I think Martha, who had commented earlier about the town itself, the people in this community who, when asked, might surprise the town officials in stepping up to volunteering either with finances, or with fundraising, or with time to create these, this enhanced space. And it seems to me in the town plan that what would really be good to have is an emphasis on these are, these are areas that we've identified that the community really wants. And so how do we find a way to do this, rather than it's not in the budget? And I know that's not what you're saying, but that, that immediate response, especially in these economic times, I could see being a barrier to something that creatively done might provide for this community the result that we're seeking without having to, you know, hit the budget. So that would just be my comment as, as a member of the advisory group.
It's also a great community-building activity for neighborhoods and whatnot, too. And just at the Canal Street meeting, it was really, you were there, very palpable the energy in the, in the room when the slides with the visual before and after of what's possible. It gets people energized. And I think that's something that could be done again in a future time to gather together people to...
Okay. Thank you. Catherine?
Kathleen White. Wilmington has a beautification committee, and, you know, that would probably be something that the select board would... that the select board would need to agree that we need, and, you know, appoint people who are interested, but that could be a body that could organize neighborhood groups and find sources of funding, just an idea.
Thanks. All right.
Couple of comments that have been made. Number one, I think that, and I'm not sure if it's with the town plan, but it certainly is within the planning department, I think areas need to be identified where the goals can be met. As an example, I know that about twenty years ago, I was asked by Helene Henry in Trees Please if I wanted a tree on my property. We put it on, and I mean, it's taller than the house today, it's in the wires, so we trim it out and stuff like that, but that's okay, we elected to accept that responsibility as a landowner. I know Trees Please identified a parcel in West Brattleboro about three years ago that I was managing for one of our customers, and when they identified that they needed a tree planted on that property, the response was, let me check, the landowner said absolutely, in fact, he even donated to the cause. I think if the areas that need enhancement can be identified with a practical solution to enhancement, you can't put a tree over something that's going to impact public works when they go to fix the water line or the sewer line. So if you can plan for that, and then at the same time have it almost pre-approved, so when the opportunity comes up, it can come right off the shelf, and you can go to that landowner, that's one way to enhance it. The other comment that I'd make about improving your neighborhood and your civic pride, you have, everybody looks at civic pride in your neighborhood in different ways. We've owned those properties for many years, we put a lot into those properties to keep the flowers going and the big tree going that arches almost all the way across Canal Street. I can't tell you how many times I've had that fed. But from the standpoint of the neighbors, there, I can name neighbors that would appropriately say, yeah, I can give you some money to plant seeds at the horticulture class, and maybe the high school can be incorporated into the beautification. But if you go to the high school and say, plant seeds so that we can have flowers in the islands, if you can't get permission from the state to put the flowers in the island, well, you've defeated that cause. So it's really, in my opinion, identifying the areas, getting approval from the people that own the areas, i.e. the state, or maybe a, a landowner, to make that beautification when the funds become available, I think would really help to take that forward.
It's similar, we've, we've talked some about sidewalk prioritizing, and it's like that, you know, it's like knowing what, what needs to come next, what we've, what we as a town have prioritized, so that when funding is available, you know, we know what's going to happen. Michael?
Yeah, Michael Bosworth, again, just a little bit more about trees. Our experience about three years ago, actually Art referred to, we were working on getting different trees, and successfully got one from the Richards Building. We were trying to do more, so sometimes it actually, what it came down to was, it didn't work for certain landowners. Certain landowners weren't interested, but certain others were, and we thought we had a couple of real, real good prospects, and for some reason, it didn't actually work for that particular property, so it served, hit or miss what will work, given some constraints. One, one time it was just, you know, they would always, you know, they figured they would be plowing their snow in the winter across where they thought earlier a, a tree could go, so when they rethought it, well, that won't work, so there were some just practical considerations. Just in reference to this example and the statement subtle tree planting, I want to just agree with the subtle tree planting statement, because if you look at the Photoshop of the tree belt that was put on here, I, I really liked that, but on the other hand, if you look at, if you take it in a larger context, when we worked on the rural zoning, rural commercial zoning, we talked about making sure people kept being able to see the view shed, you know, particularly to the north, so the more densely this tree belt might be planted, the, the more that view shed might be taken away, so I sort of, I just want to agree with the subtle tree planting.
Subtle is meant to preserve the view shed, but still provide some...
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, so I would agree with that. Yeah. Just a last remark, I'm not sure, I, I know nothing about paint on roads, and when it's feasible to do that, you know, there are a number of really tricky crosswalks in West Brattleboro, and sometimes in the mid-winter especially, they come, become pretty faint, so they become even more dangerous. I'm not sure if that's a issue, a problem that can be overcome or not, but certainly if it can, I would be all for it, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. Dora? Let me just say, it's almost quarter of eight, we've usually been ending our meetings at eight o'clock, I think we'll go to eight-thirty tonight, but we have, we have to finish up with West Brattleboro, and then Putney Road, and then we have to talk about our select board presentation, so I think we're, we're probably, we should probably wrap up West B pretty quickly, and then head to Putney Road and move on, so go ahead, Dora.
Well, actually, I could probably make my statement later, because it's sort of in general. I came in late and apologized for that, but I, I, I kind of thought you were at the end of the presentation, so I, but I just want to respond to what Jim was commenting on, and sort of following up on Maggie, and that is that you're the planning commission, so you can put into the town plan as strong language, or as weak language, on any particular item as you want. And if you're going to put in really strong language on something like landscaping, be prepared to make your case to the select board and to the people when it comes time to, you know, approving it. Part of, you know, I, I said this at the Canal Street meeting, and I, you know, it's something that has baffled me since I've lived here, and that is that we don't have sort of a coordinated effort to, to make things look at least nice. We don't necessarily have, you know, we have many property owners not necessarily caring for things, and we have a lot of public spaces which don't necessarily look as good as they could. That's been the culture of the town, we can change the culture of the town, provide leadership, and, and do a real campaign for, you know, for, for doing that, and I, I like Art's suggestion about thinking about what you can really, where are the, sort of the low-hanging fruit? Where's the easiest place to do it? Where, where do you have real buy-in from the property owner? Where do you have buy-in, you know, is there a property that the state, you know, the state V-Trans isn't going to be as picky about what you're going to do to it, and, and where are they going to be really picky? And I, and I think identifying those things and having real action steps in the town plan, this is what needs to be done, and, and delineating that, assigning that task to a specific entity would be really good.
Thank you. Anybody else about West Brattleboro? Heard of it now?
Okay, so let's move along to Putney Road. Okay. So this is a graphic of the area, and question to the top of the picture here, just to orient people, this is the existing roundabout at exit three. This is the, where the West River meets the Connecticut River, so this is the, the area bounded in yellow is the area of the master plan. The land use forecast, again, little or no growth in travel services or regional retail service, based on vehicle miles traveled data from the state, data derived from a broad range of proprietary demographic and economic activity surveys, and of the background of the consultant and his partners in this study. We have little existing demand, some vacant parcels and vacant commercial space currently on Putney Road, which indicates an excess of supply for commercial use. Here again, I want to emphasize that it's not just retailer we're referring to, but commercial space more generally. And I also want to emphasize that to some extent, what you may be observing is the impact of the recession and what you might refer to as frictional vacancies, so people upgrading from one kind of space, you know, in terms of quality, or access to a, a better space, and therefore leaving something that might be older and poorer pair of vacant, but we definitely have evidence of long-term vacancies in the area. I think the residential market is, is pretty stable, there is actually a, an existing residential neighborhood on Putney Road, or just off of Putney Road, up behind the Vanceboro parts of the CTV, and then further, further south also, sort of access from Town Cryer Drive near Renew. We've had some expression of interest in new projects in the, in the study area quite recently, and we've also had, yeah, Fortunate Fire at the Marina, but its reconstruction is almost complete, and we've had at least one other example of a large-scale commercial, reasonably good-sized commercial space that is complete and being tenanted right now. We do think that on the basis of the work that's been done previously, and this information that we've gathered for this work, that there are amendments that are needed to the zoning. Okay. This is more of a struggle to work through some of the improvements. We'll talk about what we think are the most basic, they're a little more abstract for Putney Road, because they're still talking about zoning language more than perhaps the other areas that we've reviewed. We think that simplifying the zoning districts could help implementation of the master plan, and we think that one of the key things that we'd like to preserve from the master plan is the idea of using overlays for residential use. An overlay is exactly what it sounds like, a, a sort of a dimensional, and it's something expressed with, with boundaries, that allows for, for more than one use in an underlying zoning district. We think this is worthy of debate, at least, it was an item that came up for consideration at the neighborhood meeting for Putney Road. We think that there might be an area of Putney Road where the existing store size cap requirements, which require an economic impact assessment study to be completed for store sizes in excess of sixty thousand square feet, could be lifted for a particular area of Putney Road, but not all of it. That would then be the only area in town where that was, that would be exempt from sixty thousand square feet requirement, so it's something that we think the planning commissions should discuss. Again, along with the other districts, we think that coherent public sign program could be implemented to remove sign plotter, to facilitate wayfinding, to improve the aesthetics. We think again, that site plan review, design guidelines, driveway access management are called for now, and we also think that the provision of crosswalks, bike lanes, and street trees should happen now, and that's independent of the road project, as most people know. Related to the West Brattleboro master plan, which was adopted in two thousand and seven, the V-Trans is proposed, and has completed a concept plan for a redevelopment of Putney Road through the subject, through the study area. We don't know for sure when that's likely to be, if and when that's likely to be constructed. Because of that uncertainty, we think it's important to make commitments to improve biking pedestrian access to the area without, without relying on them building the road first. So right now, there are, depending which way you want to cut it, seven or nine zoning districts in the subject area, we would, this is a suggestion from the, from the consultant, Roger, where you would reduce this effectively to three. Well, I just want to point out here that the boundary's not necessarily anything that people are deeply committed to, but in general, the concept would be something that we would want to pursue. So to the north there, off to the top of the picture there, on the left-hand side, we would refer to that as office retail travel, and that takes in the land that's bounded by ninety-one to the west, and one parcel deep on the eastern side of Putney Road, roughly from the roundabout where there's a gas station and the vacant Bigfords, down as far as effectively Black Mountain Road. The next area would be commercial industrial office, which would be a fairly broad category, and then, as you can see, again, it's bounded by ninety-one on the west, and the railroad tracks on the east, going a little deeper and behind that first zoning district that I described. This would be the area where the relaxation of the economic impact assessment requirements for sixty thousand square feet and above could be thought of as taking place. And then the neighborhood center, in the yellow there, to the bottom of the picture, from the Connecticut River across into the west, taking in the area that we now associate with Top of the Hill Grill, the existing Royal Plaza, which is where Staples is, and so forth. And there's some debate that came from the neighborhood meeting as to whether, I don't know if I'm going to get in everybody's way here, but actually pushing this zone across here to take advantage of the frontage of the West River, and that's, I mean, I think that's a point worthy of discussion, this. So that, so anyway, so the, the plan, the proposal from the, from the consultant here is to dramatically simplify the zoning, as a way of making it clearer to landowners and developers, the purpose of the plan. This is a graphic taken from the master plan itself, and what you'll notice here is, this is again, the, the West River and the Connecticut, and fairly intense development through this part of the, the bottom section of the, of the planned area. What it assumes, including the construction of these side streets, that you see, this is a quite complex, you know, network of side streets, including, you know, turnarounds, also the inclusion of even parking structures, like multi-story parking garages and so forth, it assumes a level of build-out here, remember the master plan has the deck set fifty years in advance. On the basis of the four years since the plan's been in effect, we've seen, you know, very small incremental change in this area. We're now beginning to be concerned that the long-term population and demographic, the long-term demographic indicators and the long-term economic indicators don't really support this scale of development, because in such a big area, it might be fairly intense development more through here and further south.
What are those little circles that are in light green?
The little, these guys?
Yeah, yeah.
They're just a, I can't, they're an artifact, they're pointing something, I can't remember what it is, it's not anything relevant to this.
I think it's open space or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a bull's reason.
Right. So...
You know, if you counter that picture of the long-term plan with the fact that we're struggling to get a planter put somewhere, it does kind of put things in perspective as being outrageously unachievable.
Right. Okay. I mean, maybe this is, maybe this is a good time to start the discussion, because I think in many ways, in the work that Sue and I have done with Roger, and even in the meetings, I would say that to some extent... I would say that to some extent, Putney Road was the more challenging of the, of the districts for us to review. And maybe this is a good segue. Each one of these neighborhood sessions, Roger asked both these questions. And I think that when you see the first question here, do the proposed improvements meet the needs of the neighborhood? There are some neighborhood needs present in Putney Road right now. And I would say they are the very small but significant residential neighborhood that's to the southeast of the area. And to some extent, residential activity just outside the area of the master plan on the bottom of Black Mountain Road, there's a small trailer park there that also you would imagine would want to treat Putney Road, both sides of Putney Road, as their shopping district and the area where they would want to undertake regular daily activities. For all those residences, I think it, Putney Road, again, a little bit like Route 9 or Canal Street, acts as a dividing line rather than as something that can be readily crossed. And, and so it acts as a barrier to some extent. Right now, there is a crosswalk that's poorly marked, as in the paint is faded, that's incorporated into the roundabout design and is very rarely used by pedestrians, partly for that reason and partly, I think, because it's so close to the roundabout that it feels hazardous to actually use it. There's a lot of cars moving in different directions and you feel as a pedestrian that they're not really paying attention to you, but the other vehicles around them. And then from that distance at the exit three roundabout, there is not a crosswalk that's controlled in any way until you get to the Common near the retreat. So you're either on one side or the other from downtown effectively to exit three, if you're going to make a legal crossing only.
Yeah, well, it's not just the residents in that area.
Yes.
But it's people like me and people downtown and then people, there's a lot of people from SIT who walked into town, so it's general.
What I'd say is that the barrier to easy movement upwards and up and down Putney Road from downtown and from other parts of town all the way up to Putney Road is a major stumbling block for the development of Putney Road and as well as people living in and around Putney Road. So again, to put that first question, I think there are some neighborhood needs that are not being addressed currently and I think that's a key issue in terms of the land use chapter, our goals and policies and action steps for Putney Road should acknowledge that there are neighborhood needs currently not being met. And then the next one is, are the non-residential uses appropriate? And here, it's very clear that not all of us buy a car every day or go to the hardware store every day or the pool at the Colonial every day or even go to Hannaford's every day. So there are some regional level activities that are important that are being served by Putney Road. And they're, it's an important location for employment. There's a very large number and a wide variety of jobs that are located in the planned area, which we would want to preserve and enhance. But this question, I think, is a little bit more challenging to answer with reference to Putney Road than it is for the other districts that we've reviewed tonight.
South of Memorial Bridge, on Putney Road, South Memorial Bridge to the Common.
Yeah.
Is that section of Putney Road in any plans? Is it in the downtown plan? Or is that just like an island there that is uncovered?
There is no downtown plan.
There's no downtown plan.
Right, of course. Yes, the master plan is coming.
If it was, it wouldn't be in that either, actually.
Okay.
But you're right. And it sort of feels like it when you walk in.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because I, I actually bike on that a lot and there's no way to, you can't maneuver. Yeah, exactly. So, okay, just curious.
You didn't hit the pole in the middle of the round?
Yeah.
What's that?
You didn't hit one of the light poles?
Actually, there's an imprint of your forehead on the pole.
Yeah, exactly. The tree that's like right in the road.
Sidewalk that goes up over.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, extreme pedestrian.
And for that matter, nothing north of the roundabout is in the Putney Road plan either. And that's pretty significant.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I would want to say actually that there's a fair amount of pedestrian traffic I notice north of the roundabout.
Yes.
Yeah. Though it's some.
And lots of commercial activity, of course.
Yes, substantially.
Industrial, commercial.
Right.
And that's, this is the one area where there is access to the river.
Um, there's certainly access to the West River.
Yeah, the West.
That's pretty easy to manage. Is that the one you mentioned, the one you made? Yeah, that's pretty easy to manage. And there is pretty substantial frontage to the West River.
You just can't get there safely. You've got to drive in your car to get there safely.
Yes.
This was one of the areas at the meetings that were held years ago about the, that V-Trans had where they wanted feedback from the town at what they wanted to see on Putney Road. But this was one of the areas where people really wanted bike and pedestrian ways. It was really clear whether, whether it was a bike lane on Putney Road or a, or a path that would be separate, like your slide there from West Brattleboro that had a bike path separate. People, a lot of people mentioned that they would like to see that, maybe even river, close to the river kind of way to access things.
Gary Dora had a question, I think. Did you have your hand up?
Actually, I just have the graphics that I was looking at.
We're adequate to the.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, just to illustrate that last point about pedestrian and bike access. So right now, this is, this is Putney Road, basically over the road from Hannaford. And this is very similar to the kind of streetscape that you would get if the so-called alternative one in the concept plan from V-Trans was implemented. It's the same location with a broad, next strip and some street plantings. What this does is narrow down the width of the total street area. As you, if you very, if you pay careful attention, there's still no implementation of a crosswalk here, but it would make that perhaps a little bit more doable. So.
Landscaping in Photoshop is easy.
It's my favorite. You can do it even when it's raining. It's really good. So, but I get really dirty. So that's just an illustration. That's one, there will be one simple illustration. And again, to go back to the, could we do it within five years or five to 10, regardless of where the road project is at, then there's a consideration here of, of doing this kind of short-term or, you know, a project similar to this.
Were that, was that a comment at the Putney Road meeting that, I didn't get to that one?
There was one person there who was a former resident of the residential neighborhood behind, you know, on Leamark Drive in the CCB. She was, she spoke very effectively about the problem of using, you know, going to get a gallon of milk from Hannaford's with a toddler, requiring use of their car. So.
Okay. James?
I was just wondering how significant the barriers are to the old railroad bed that goes up the West River. I know it's privately owned, there's a house up there, but.
So there are known, there are, there are known barriers in terms of completing that, in terms of agreement from landowners. We think there may be some recent shifts or improvements, but.
It's been tried and failed.
It's a long.
Been worked on for a long time. Been worked on and not worked.
I would put it in terms of plan language, it's a long-term project.
West River Trail?
Yeah.
Could talk to Alex, listen. He's part of that group.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
I just curious. Tim, did you?
Yeah, I have a few comments.
Okay.
Just as always.
Just a few?
Only a list.
How long have I got, Gary? I know you're on a deadline. Two minutes? Can't do it? I need more.
Couple of minutes. Go ahead.
Can we go more than two?
Just start.
I need to negotiate.
The clock is ticking now.
Here we go, okay.
You're losing your time.
I've, I've got some very general things to say, which tie into Putney Road specifically. Okay? First of all, in terms of a document and the town plan and land use section, okay, one of the things that's come out in tonight's presentation or in these, what I call path points, is that we keep going back to the slow pace of development, the slow change, poor economic circumstances, and so forth. And one, and Rod made a comment, or there was a comment on this, there's no pressure to change. Okay, we have, there's no pressure to change. And I think that's what we've seen in this town probably for quite some time. And I think that this document, this town plan, should create the pressure for change. Okay, it really, we really should be not just like, how do we put a few trees in or how do we put in some flower baskets? You know, West Brat has plenty of flower baskets. We've got them on the bridges, we've got them in, outside the, you know, little places. And it's the community that did that, so it can be done. But the, the document, this document needs to set, the land use part of it needs to set the scene, okay, for succeeding with this change, this pressure, you know, a pressure for change. And as part, part of that, and Putney Road brings it up, I think that, you know, it needs to stimulate. Okay, the, the, right now, the commercial districts, in terms of their contribution to the grand list, is being questioned. In terms of their contribution to the tax base, it's being questioned. It's like, is it a fair balance, you know, between residential and commercial? Is it, you know, are we succeeding here? And one of the things that we, you know, that we have to do is increase that commercial effectiveness or increase that commercial development. And we have zoning that inhibits development, so I really, you know, to cut, to cut Putney Road down to three, fantastic. You know, that's visionary. You know, let's get rid of the nine districts. You know, and when I hear someone say also, the, you know, the, what's affectionately known as the big box ordinance, you know, the 65,000, I think, Rod, by the way, but, you know, what, 60,000, 65,000. And it was specifically tied to, or to inhibit retail stores. You know, above 65,000, we could put a factory, but 65,000 was, you know, we don't want a, I don't know, Home Depot or Walmart. To, to, to review right now, that restriction, I mean, there's been, there's been no big stuff built up there. They're, do people come in or do developers come in and look at our zoning and go, wow, that might stop it? Or, you know, that, that economic clause in there is a $100,000 investment just to get, just to do the studies. So the town plan, at this point, should really start to try and remove those obstacles, you know, and to stimulate rather than to stop. And when I hear, see some of this stuff being talked about for Putney Road, I think that's, at least the fact it's been, you know, in the conversation is, is very positive. And then the other thing is that I really think we've got, we have, we're, we're in a new world right now. And I've said this to a few people, we've got a new commercial. Commercial concept of '83, '93, 2003, 2013 is different. And the commercial world that we're moving into now is going to operate very differently from how we were before, you know, post-depression or post-economic recession or whatever it is. And we've got to look at, and again, this starts to address it, mixed use, how we really encourage and stimulate residential slash commercial development being put together. Now, we sort of talk about it a little bit. I mean, there'd be nothing better for me than to see some new businesses go into Putney Road or West Brat for that matter, where it's tied in quite tightly with the residential aspects of it. You know, so that we've got, you know, new, new development that is, is broad and I, I think, you know, trending towards the new commercial. We had a meeting at the, there was a meeting, a planning meeting at the, a town plan meeting at the museum, and I found that fascinating because nobody in that audience, and they were all probably, or in the group, the public, were all maybe in their 30s and 40s, had the concept of commercial or industrial or development in the sense that, you know, us slightly older people do. I mean, they, they're like looking like, what's the, what's the big deal? What's the worry? I want to have my business in my house. Why can't I? You know, why, why, what, why are we trying to, you know, what, what is a residential district? What is a commercial district? And why are we, you know, segregating them? Why have we got the burbs over here and the place you work over there? I mean, we really got to think about how this town successfully integrates and integrates in each of these corridors, let's call them, that we've been discussing tonight. And I think it's the, it's, it's not, it's partly about how it looks, of course. It's partly about trees and things like that. But it's, it's also, the plan really needs to stimulate and lead. And I hope that the document, when it comes out, does that in the strongest, you know, to take Doris's words, in the strongest possible ways and stimulates people's thinking about it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tim. All right.
I have a comment about Tim's comment. These materials that Robyn Sue put in the packet speaks to that same issue, but it also adds the fact that a lot of now, commercial development is, well, people's retail habits are changing and they buy more things online and things like that. But in addition to younger people's minds that may be different, retail shopping has changed a lot and that's affected a lot of downtown development and strip laws.
Yep.
Art Greenbaum, I really echo what Tim said. When you proposed the three districts and you showed some of the neighborhood concept and then the IOC, I think it was, and so on, myself, I would number one, encourage you right there. I'd encourage you to take the NC and mix some of that with the CIO going towards that visionary approach, right in there, correct. I, I'd encourage you to look at that because commercial industrial office has a definite purpose. NC has a definite purpose and you can blend into that area specifically, you know, I think of like Kendall Commons up in Hanover. That pressure is going to come here. People like Gary are getting older every day and he's going to want to stay here and he won't want the big house anymore. So he's going to look for that Kendall Commons and my wife and I will be looking sooner than Gary. But, you know, we would encourage that visionary plan that you just had. And I know that, I've had numerous conversations with Rod, there's a tremendous amount of buildable, good infrastructure all in that whole district. And if you don't have a good vision, you wouldn't have Glen Orrin Drive and Ferry Road where we do have jobs up there. You wouldn't have the Exit One Industrial Park. And it's not out of, out of whack to say that 20 years ago, 25 years ago, Vermont National Bank's Operations Center caused the traffic lights to virtually back up all the way from Howard Johnson's. And it's also maybe not publicly known, but today, the People's United Bank Operations Center is in that building. And I do know, because I work in there, that there's over 180 jobs in that building again. So it's come back. So consider that, and I thought that visionary concept was superb. And again, whether it's Canal Street, Western Avenue, the Westby area, or Putney Road, I would just encourage trying to get some of these bulb-outs, some of these pedestrian crosswalks a little easier so that we can get across with them. Thank you.
Thanks, Art.
Can I follow up on that one remark from Roger? So if we go, I'm just going to use this for illustration purposes. If you look at this road here, this big curling road, this building here is the existing.
New chapter.
New chapter building. You see it here. And you see some, these small brown structures are basically, you know, you know, duplexes or large single-family homes or something similar, taking advantage, of course, of the fabulous physical amenity, which is a view from here to the southwest, straight across the Retreat Meadows and the Retreat Structures themselves add a beautiful backdrop. And you see the water tower up on the hill there. The issue with this is, when you think about this, if it's going to be a private developer, they have to be able to pay for this road from this point here all the way here, using the sale of the, these parcels of land to finance that road. And that's extremely problematic. So when we thought about drawing this line for neighborhood center, Sue and Roger and I talked about this at length and, because Roger also not being from here is just startled when we went and, and visited this, this region and looked across it, this area of town. But what we'd say is that this is suitable for a large developer like Kendall Homes, who's going to take a very large piece of land, develop it as a project independently. And therefore, because of their ability to do the investment and their ability to finance it, under those circumstances, we could imagine them being able to finance the road. But the traditional, more traditional kind of, you know, sort of slows up the. But the traditional, more traditional kind of, you know, sort of slow subdivision process, with developing, you know, with individual contractors picking up a speculative home, there's no way that they'll be able to finance the road. And I think that's fair to say that, given the town's current circumstances, there's no real desire to take on the bond that would build a road, and then wait, and sit, sit and wait for it to be, to be opened up and developed.
Well, then, it could be an overlay.
Yes, it could be. So what we're getting at is, if there's an extension of this, then they'd be happy to see it as an overlay, that, in those terms.
It should have the ability to go both ways, is where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
I just want to point out that it's owned residential now.
Yes, it is.
And that was the reason.
Yeah, I think it's actually...
The very thing that everybody has seen in that is...
I think it might be resold rural residential.
No, no, it's, it's what, is it district?
This is West River.
West River.
That's West River Residential.
Yeah, WWR.
And it was owned that way because of the commitments that were made, so, yeah. Dora?
Well, just a comment. It might not be as complicated as, or expensive as Rod is saying, because there is a potential to do a connection from the complex where Kipling Cinemas, Peebles, Peebles, you know, to go in that way, which, I mean, that's, would actually be relatively simple to connect if you could get, you know, home, if you could get the property owners to, to agree on...
This, this hatching indicates, you know, like a cliff basin, so...
No, from, from the, from the other side, though, you could connect, because that's a parking lot right there, where, where, when, where, so you could, you could connect to that and do it from, yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah, there's definitely over there...
There's a very large detention basin that's part of their activity permit for the, for this complex here. I mean, there's some traversing that needs to go on, and you could get to it from... This shading that you don't see very clearly here, through, underneath the yellow, indicates a very steep drop-off. So there's a really dramatic grade change between here, which is the existing Peebles, this is Peebles and Staples right here. So this indicates a dramatic grade change, and then this is a huge grade change all the way around here. So it's a little more tricky to negotiate if you're going to build a road to town standards, which is what you'd need to do. So it's, it's not impossible, but it would take some real plan and more money, actually, probably go this way over this way. I mean, that's a little more detailed, I think, because people will be having to work that out later on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I just, since we were talking about the detail, just a couple of comments, not to throw a monkey wrench into, you know, the love fest that we have going on right now, but in a discussion, in a separate discussion with folks, when we were talking, I was telling, relating the story about the first meeting with the, the presentation at the museum. And there was discussion about, how much should you encourage? Because there's still a lot of infill that can happen downtown. And the question is, how do you balance, I mean, how do you balance trying to figure out where you put your population, where, where you do your encouragement to do development? Where does it make the most sense? Do you encourage people to build entirely new infrastructure in a place where, you know, it, it, it has a certain kind of, I mean, you want to, you want to change that infrastructure, you want to encourage certain kinds of things, but the question is, do you want the, I mean, this comes back to the discussion about, where do you see the population? How much population growth do you see happening? And where should you do the most encouragement to try to have all of those mixed-use potentials? I mean, I totally agree with, with Art on encouraging mixed use and pockets of doing mixed use, and I think everything that happens should be mixed use. But the other question is, do you do it at the expense of doing the infill in places where you, you know, you already have all of the infrastructure? And I think that is, you know, that, that the balancing act that needs to happen when thinking about this stuff. And, and I would like to see, if, going back to what Tim was talking about, sort of, instead of talking about what we don't want, to talk about what we're encouraging, and then to come up with a way to encourage people to do that. And I, I think that, you know, putting things in place in the town plan is great, but we've got to have some sort of finance mechanism behind it. And that's larger than the Planning Commission, but it's part of, you know, the realm of thinking about doing town planning. Because you're not going to encourage people to do stuff if, you know, if you, if you don't have that. You're not going to, there's, I mean, you know, the, the idea of some large developer coming in here with lots of money, being able to do, do all of this, you know, as we pointed out earlier, it, it just isn't necessarily going to happen. So the question is, if you want basic improvements when someone's doing something to their property, it has to be built in there, and not just telling people that they have to do it. Just one other separate...
Can you make it really quick?
No, yeah, no, it, it has to do with the trails, going back to the West River Trail, because before the West River Trail came up, one of the things I was noticing was that the plan doesn't necessarily have a connection, and it goes back to what Jim was talking about, about that section of, of Putney Road not being included. And I'd like to see some reference, not just in this one, but all of them, to the connections to all of the trails that exist. I know the Conservation Commission has been working on a lot of that work anyway, but it should be, it should be included.
Okay, thanks. Well, we're going to have to wrap this up. And I think that's actually about it. Because we need to talk for at least a few minutes about our presentation to the Select Board. So, thanks, everybody, for coming, and thanks for your comments, and everything's been duly noted, and...
Thanks for reading that, too.
It's what?
We don't need to go through it.
No, thank you.
It's okay.
We don't need to go through it.
It's okay, really.
So, essentially, we've got in our packets the proposed, well, some of this, most of this, is what the, the Select Board has gotten, or will be getting in there.
No, what we're proposing to give to them.
This is the draft of the PowerPoint presentation that we hope to present to the Select Board on the 21st.
Along with some other materials that we think could be useful as background to provide in their packets.
Yeah, we've got two obligations here. Confirm what to go, what goes into their packet, so they pick up the Friday before the Select Board meeting. And then, what would we speak to, and how would we do that the night of the meeting? This PowerPoint presentation is the draft of.
So you have received a copy of the PowerPoint, and hopefully you've had a chance to review it. We met with Gary last week. Do you want me to stop Gary?
Well, let me just say that I think the, the thing that we really wanted to stress in getting this, you know, where we are with the plan together, is simplicity and clarity. And so that's, that's really, I think, what, I think has been done very successfully with this PowerPoint presentation. And, so, I don't know, I just wanted to say that. We really wanted to talk about the, the things that had to be in the plan, that have to be in the plan by statute, and where we are now with the plan, what's yet to be done, and the outreach that's been done.
Yeah. That's not really in the slide right now, in the slides right now. I thought that, that could be talked to more. We gave this example of two chapters that have been written in kind of the back and fore.
We'll have that in.
This slide doesn't... I love this.
Yeah.
I call this the candy man.
We'd like to live it.
Yeah, this we propose putting in their packets as kind of an overview. And I thought, I mean, maybe there's some way that we can throw in a slide, and then somebody on the commission can talk to this, or talk it through a little bit more.
It's pretty detail-oriented to put in a PowerPoint, though.
Yeah, no, it couldn't, it couldn't go in like that, but it's kind of a bullet of kind of the types of events that are done.
You could put some banner hanging on that wall, too.
So I would propose that I, you know, maybe have a conversation with people on the commission, although we don't have it right now, about who, who might present what, you know, at the, at the meeting. It's next Tuesday, so we don't have a lot of time, but at least, you know, for the half hour that we're going to have with the Select Board, we want to be very clear and clean about it, and accurate. So, is that okay procedure for me to call around?
Yes, it's more than that, yeah.
And I'm happy to, if somebody's going to speak to some of it, I'm happy to talk with you this week, or give you some notes as well.
Maybe, so we know that Liz is not going to be available, but everyone else is. Is that a good assumption, right? Okay, so, of those that are going to be there, if you've had some time to spend with the packet now, and get a sense of what we're trying to achieve here, I think it's, I think, pretty, it's a pretty pivotal moment, the relation, you know, this, this meeting with the Select Board. It's really important to get this, you know, done well. And so, if there's something in the PowerPoint presentation that we're looking at right now, or in your package, that you feel more comfortable, or more interested in talking about than other sections, then why don't you let Sue and I know via email? And then we can give you whatever support you need, but, and maybe Gary, if you want to follow that up with a phone conversation.
I, you know, one of the things that occurred to me right off was that, Carolina, that you might be interested in, in talking about public outreach, and some of the meetings that have occurred, and the people that, that have come to them, and things like that, you know.
Yeah.
We really want to make sure that the Select Board and the public in general know, you know, what the, what has occurred over time, so...
Looks like it's all on here, Carolina.
Yeah, most of it is on that big chart, yeah. There was some smaller groups, stuff, I think, that might not be on that.
Yeah.
It made it up.
But do you think that would be, would you like to do that part?
Sure. And I also think it's important to stress the work of the T-PAD group, too, because that was really very instrumental, all their work.
Do you think a slide?
I don't know, a slide?
Well, we've got that one where we might do something with this, that's a little, it turned up here. We might, we might work on the octopus here, maybe calamari. So, but that would, yeah, I think we could probably do it there, yeah. There's a point to talk to.
So we got four minutes of camera time left.
Oh, yes. A picture is worth a thousand words, you know, I don't know how, if there's any way to have...
That was my lame attempt at a picture.
I know.
Right. We might, yeah, we might talk something a bit better than that.
Yeah.
Well, why don't, why doesn't everybody think about what, what portion they might be, you know, presenting? And let me know, and let Rod and Sue know.
Yeah.
I, I watched the last Select Board meeting at home on television, and when they were talking about the task force thing, when that group came up, what was, what stood out to me was Chris Chapman was kept referring to, and he must have got it because he got it in the email when we're doing our outreach to the community, but he was speaking about, he used the Ag Plan as an example with the, with the goals, objectives, and action steps, and, and that really jumped out at me. And I think if there is a plan, a partial draft that you could include that's like that, that is in that format, because that format is really good, and his using that in that meeting just really jumped out at me.
Thank you. We had talked about sending either the Arts or the Education chapter along. They had seen the Education chapter.
They've seen the Ag chapter, that was the last package.
Oh, so they, so that's...
But we thought maybe an example of another one.
Another one, yeah.
Yeah, we thought about that. Thank you for reminding.
Yeah, no, that was, I wondered how they got that. I thought maybe you already had sent it all off at that time, but it was great, because just got his little stamp of approval there. I mean, we really liked it.
I was thinking that there could be more of a definition of the state requirements. It's mentioned a couple of times in these slides, but there seems to be so many varying interpretations of what the master plan is, and should be, I think it would be nice if the Planning Commission defined it themselves.
Yes. Okay, that would be good.
Something that summarized this stuff to me, like, or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But much simpler than this. And, and because, as I said, from my perspective, it protects the town and the development regulations against, you know, lawsuits and so forth. I mean, it's, it's, it's the backbone of any zoning development, so it, it has a very particular purpose.
Okay, so, let's keep in touch. But it has to be in the next couple of days, okay?
Yeah, because the packet has to go to them this week.
I have to get it to Jan on Wednesday, the materials that are going to make it into their book.
So, but it isn't that even so much as what we're, I mean, there, it is that, but also what, what people are, how, how we're all going to participate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
At the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned something about the Select Board wanting to talk about sustainability. What was that all about?
Yeah. You know what, I, I think we should probably talk about that at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Because it's a, it's a big subject, and, so...
I think we need to not...
Is it like a whole new heading? I'm just wondering, like, I mean, a touch of context.
It's a commitment that the Select Board made on our behalf to hold a, a public meeting about sustainability.
I moved that we put it at the beginning of the agenda next time, so that doesn't get left to the end, and then get bumped again. It's, I think, the Select Board has entreated us with a, a task that I think we need to do sooner rather than later.
And when is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is two weeks from today.
Twenty-seventh.
So it's twenty-seventh.
Yes.
So you moved that, but how about if we just say that we're going to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
And let's not talk about it.
Are we tired, or what?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.